I greatly appreciate it. Council, thank you. We're gonna start the meeting. I'm gonna ask everyone to please silence your cell phones and take your seats so that we can start the meeting. That means you, Miles. Keep on the check. Lauren, I'm just gonna start calling people's names. Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you so very much. Good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd. Today's invocation will be given by Bishop Toops of the Beaumont Diocese. If you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag. Thank you, Bishop Toops. Yes.
It's a great privilege to be with you all today and so grateful for all of our, that our city fathers and mothers do for Southeast Texas, so let us pray. Loving Father, we ask your guidance in all that we do for the good of our people. Ask your guidance to be upon our mayor and city councilmen and women. We pray, Lord, for all of the civil servants of our area to build up our community, to build up the body of Christ, to help bring peace in these troubled times. We pray, Lord, for a great sense of unity in all of our community. We pray, Lord, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things that we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Grant serenity, courage, and wisdom upon us this day. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so very much, Bishop Toops. At this time, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Belshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three proclamations today. First, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as National Preservation Month, and that will be read by Councilmember Getz. Thank you, Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Beaumont Main Street is a project of the nonprofit organization Build Inc., and it's been dedicated to the revitalization and restoration of Beaumont's historic commercial district for over 30 years. And whereas we recognize 2023 Preservation Month theme as People Saving Places. Historic place savers and preservationists pour their time, energy, and money into protecting places they care about, often without recognition. Preservation Month 2023 is for them, a national high five to everyone during the great, doing the great work of saving places, and hopes that it will inspire and empower others to do the same. And whereas Beaumont Main Street contributes to the National Trust for Historic Places and partners with the Texas Historical Commission, they will celebrate Preservation Month on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, with an Imagine the Possibilities Tour of Downtown Properties. The event is free and open to the public. The event tours will be offered every 30 minutes, starting at the historic Jefferson Theater from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. end. Whereas Beaumont Main Street is dedicated to the restoration and revitalization of Beaumont's historic Central Business District, Beaumont Main Street is Southeast Texas's only organization officially affiliated with the National Trust for Historic Preservation and Texas Historical Commission. Beaumont Main Street is an advocate not only for brick and mortar, but works to help create a healthy and vibrant downtown that our community can be proud of, using a four-point approach of design, organization, promotion, and economic development. And whereas the city of Beaumont also recognizes the importance of preserving our historic buildings and districts throughout our city, especially our downtown district, designated as a National Historical District by the United States of America Department of the Interior. And now therefore, Robin Muton, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, Texas, does hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Preservation Month, and calls upon all citizens of Beaumont to join their fellow citizens across the nation in recognizing and participating in this special observance, and commends Beaumont Main Street and its staff and Board of Directors and their many volunteers for the work they do to protect, preserve, promote, and revitalize downtown Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set her hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, May 2nd, 2023, and accepting today will be Tom Bell and Carol Gary from Main Street. If y'all will come forward and receive your proclamation and shake our hands and maybe give us a few words of what's going on at Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Glad to be here today. We're excited about Preservation Month. We do it every year. We have a lot of fun. We show a lot of people a lot of cool buildings that some of them we've saved, some of them we still need to try to save. So that's my main focus is to keep some of them that need saving saved. I wanted to introduce our new president, Matthew Matheny. He's here with us today. Jennifer. Yeah. What's her last name?
Gregory.
Gregory. I always called her, she's a, her mother's a friend of mine. Last name, but you got the old maiden name deal going. Anyway, Carol is gonna explain to y'all how our Preservation Month deal is gonna work, and I think y'all find it interesting because we have a really cool new app that has about 40 buildings on it that tell you everything about the buildings that you can use anytime you want to go and find one of these buildings and study it if you have relatives in town or people visiting you. So Carol Gary is our Community Development Director, and she will tell you all about it, and I think she's passed out some of this information.
Yes, and Jennifer's helping as well. Thank y'all for having us here today, and as we celebrate Preservation Month in May, across the nation, great things are happening to call attention to historic properties, and we couldn't be happier to be part of that here in downtown Beaumont. So lots to tell you, and I'll talk fast like I always do so I can get it all in. We are gonna start on Thursday at the Jefferson Theater, and we are so excited to not only call the public's attention to a website that we maintain through the THC Downtown TX, which lists all of our properties for anyone who's interested in coming to Beaumont, buying a building, or if they just wanna learn more about what's available. It's a full-time job keeping that website up. We're not always as great at it as we would like to be, but it's a work in progress, and we do have the properties listed. We try to keep up with what's for lease, what's for sale, but that is a wonderful website that people will use all over the United States to look for property in downtown Beaumont. So we have, in the little handouts that we gave, we have the QR code that will direct you to that website, downtowntx.org. And there is also, not to be confusing, there's also an exciting second QR code where you can download a free app that is DISTRX, D-I-S-T-R-X. We've been working on this for months, and it has 43 of our historic properties listed, and it tells you about the property, when it was built, and a lot of the architectural details. So you can scan that, download that free app, and get on a bike or drive around with Grandma, and it's, it's, it's not a beacon operated. It's map, it's on the map. It starts out with stop 1 through 20. You start at Crockett Street and make your way through town. We will be featuring nine of those properties on our tour on Thursday. The tour will begin at 4:00. Everybody's gonna come to the beautiful Jefferson Theater, where we're gonna kick off, show everybody how to download the app so they can come back later, and then just give them a little taste of what some of these beautiful buildings look like. We are excited to have the THC Architects here. They're coming in to surprise us with a rendering of the Nathan Building, an announcement will be made there, and Crockett Street, we'll get a sneak peek there of some exciting news, so I'm not gonna spoil the fun for you. You have to come and hear all the exciting things. But you can also go down in the basement vault at 505 Orleans Building and go in the old bank vault. So some places you haven't seen, some exciting news. We want you to be part of that. See you on Thursday. If you have any questions, you can reach out. It's all over Facebook, the maps here on the, on the little printout, and we also have that on our website. So I'm gonna take one more quick moment to thank Council and our city managers for allowing Beaumont Main Street to come together with a group of local preservationists to put together some ideas on a preservation proposal that we submitted at March, mid-March, that from what I understand has been well received. And in the preservation proposal, there are samples of what other historical cities have done. There's a, there's links to all kinds of valuable information that can help put our city where it needs to be historically into perspective for what could be done to protect and preserve these old buildings. So thank you to the Historical Commission of Beaumont, the Heritage Society, and all of our wonderful friends, some property owners that came together and got, we put our heads down and worked really diligently for about three weeks on this proposal, and we couldn't be happier that you guys have hopefully read not all 45 pages, but in addition to reading it and sharing our ideas, that you'll look at those resources that we've provided to you. I know that was a lot, but I thank y'all and I appreciate y'all. Thank you for the proclamation today.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate all of the work that you do.
Oh, you're welcome.
And to the new president, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for continued support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. If you have any questions, just reach out to us at Main Street about the tour. You can just start the tour and go along on your way, and people will greet you along your way. So it's kinda self-guided, but you will have hosts and hostesses at each destination, so it's only gonna take you about an hour to do the tour, and you can come at your convenience. And there will be a food truck in downtown Beaumont on Thursday. A&amp;E Smokey Pig will be in the parking lot by Jefferson Theater, so y'all come and eat some barbecue with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope to see you.
Jessica, take a picture of us with the.
Can we take a picture?
Sure.
With the decorations.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Older Americans Month, and that will be read by Mayor Pro Tim Durio. Thank you.
Trying to tell me something, Mayor? I think this probably should have been.
That's why I passed it.
Should have been read by Councilman Samuel, but I got it. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, and whereas older adults in Beaumont are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generation and strengthen bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas the older adults in Beaumont should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas we wish to join together to extend assistance to the older adults in Beaumont by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active, engaged citizens. And whereas Older American Month is sponsored by Nutrition and Services for Seniors, a nonprofit agency dedicated to providing innovative, effective programs that assist older adults in leading quality lives while maintaining dignity and independence. And whereas the purpose of this initiative is to publicly recognize their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community, and to identify ways to make their lives comfortable and respectable. And whereas to honor those who have significantly contributed to our community economically, socially, culturally, or otherwise improving the quality of life in Beaumont, Nutrition and Services for Seniors is hosting the 12th Annual Deliver the Difference Benefiting Meals on Wheels to honor Sherry and Jeff Brannick, Thursday, May 4th, 2023. Now therefore, Robin Muton, Mayor of Beaumont, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Older Americans Month in the city of Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set her hand and caused the seal of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Robin Muton, Mayor, May 2nd, 2023. And accepting this proclamation will be Mr. Charlie Holder and Ms. Jennifer Pate.
Please come forward. Thank you.
This is Jennifer Pate. I'm Charlie Holder. We're representing the Meals on Wheels. We're both very blessed to be able to serve on the board of the Meals on Wheels. Just as Mayor Pro Tim was mentioning, the fabric of our community is the older adults. That's how we're here. And the Meals on Wheels mission for Southeast Texas is to keep folks in their own home, allowing them the nutrition they need. There's so many that need our services. We're currently at 1,900 meals a day. That covers Harden and Jefferson Counties, and it's a struggle to keep up with the meal, the prices of food and all the things that go along with supply chain issues that we're all very well aware of. We've got our event coming up Thursday, and we appreciate all of the support from the city. We appreciate the ability to be able to serve, the program that we're doing on Thursday. The reason that we're doing this fundraiser is to keep people off the waiting list for the Meals on Wheels. We only have so much funding, and therefore it only goes so far. And so fundraisers such as this, proclamations and the exposure such as this helps us to get those Meals on Wheels waiting lists down to a nil, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer with the rest of the details.
Well, so Deliver the Difference, this is our 12th annual. We're so excited. Charlie and I, this is what, our fourth time around?
Fifth, sixth.
Fifth, something like that. So anyway, we're honored to do that and recognizing the Brannicks as our honorees and thrilled to do that at the event center, and I guess that's it.
Yep, we're also honoring Dr. Susan and Dr. Margolis, Wayne Margolis, as well. And so we'd like to have everybody there to help us to raise money, to keep our folks and our, especially the ones that are kind of forgot about, taken care of.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. What you do is so important to our community. I was telling someone, this year alone, I was able to visit four people that are 100-plus years old, sharp, sharp people too.
Yes.
Very sharp. And so we do, we have a large community of seasoned, I'll call them seasoned citizens, and just so very proud and of the work that you do. So thank you so very much. I don't know how I'm gonna fit it all in on Thursday because everybody has a Thursday event, but hopefully we'll get by.
Thank you for the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Can we do a picture?
Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you. At this time, the next proclamation will be the National Day of Prayer, and I will be reading that one for all ages, Mayor Pro Tim Durio. Whereas Thursday, May 4th, 2023, has been officially designated as the 72nd Annual National Day of Prayer, and millions will unite in prayer at thousands of events from coast to coast to pray for the achievement of America's goal of peace with justice for all people of the world. Whereas this year's theme is Pray Freverently in Righteousness and Avail It Much. This is from James 5 and 6, and serve as a reminder that the effective fervent prayer of a righteous man avail it much. Whereas at a time in our nation's history, when the power of prayer is needed more than ever, it is fitted that we publicly demonstrate our faith in the power of intercession. Whereas civic prayer and National Day of Prayer have a long and viable history in our Constitution Republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. In 1952, Congress established an annual day of prayer, and in 1988, that law was amended designated, des- designating the National Day of Prayer as the first Thursday in May. Whereas the National Day of Prayer, now permanently authorized by Congress and annually proclaimed by the President, is in keeping with the Constitution, the customs, and the history of our nation. Whereas people throughout the nation are encouraged to exercise their precious freedom of religious worship on Thursday, May 4th, 2023. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton of the city of Beaumont, recognize the importance of expressing religious rights and freedom, and do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4th, as the 72nd National Day of Prayer. In Beaumont, and urge all citizens to observe this day by joining members of all faiths and creeds all over our nation in seeking divine guidance from ourselves, our leaders, our country, and to reaffirm the fact that we are truly one nation, indivisible, under God. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, has set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed, signed this day, May 2nd, 2023, Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting this proclamation on today will be Pastor Donnie Flippo of Gospel Center Church, Beaumont, Texas, and members of the clergy, police partnership, and members of the volunteer chaplains. If you are all, please come forward and accept this proclamation on today on behalf of Beaumont City Council.
Pastor Flippo, how you doing?
Thank you. Pastor Ben War.
Mayor, we wanna thank you for, and the council members, for honoring and acknowledging the power of prayer. And I personally want you to know, I see your heart. You have been involved through our Pray Beaumont Prayer Drive. You've been involved in our National Day of Prayer, and probably a lot of people don't know, but when ministers come and open up with prayer, you send a kind letter thanking them for their prayers. So I want to publicly say thank you for your leadership, and thank God that we have a city, when there's so many cities in turmoil, that we honor prayer. Wow, we are blessed in Beaumont. So I wanna encourage y'all, let's keep prayer at the center point of our city, 'cause it does make a difference, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Flippo.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, city manager, extended servant leaders. We're so grateful that you trust us. Pastor Howard Cameron would be here today. Due to illness, he's not able to be here. But the Lord led me to reflect on the importance of this day in light of the past mayors who have served our communities. I wanna call their name, not telling my age, talking about old and all, but Mr. Jimmy Coconos, Mr. Bill Neal, Ms. Evelyn Lord, Mr. David W. Moore, Mr. Guy Gudson, and Ms. Becky Ames, and as well as you, our esteemed Mayor, Ms. Robin Muton. Each of these have, and you are, along with Council, reflecting on how important prayer is. The success of all of our leadership roles has nothing to do with, may the community know, our throwing dice, our flipping corns, or some educated conclusion or political persuasion. We have the conviction that it's our commune with God and the Creator of all of us that has brought us to success. We remind ourselves today that prayer is not preparation for the battle or the battles. Prayer is the battle. And we're your supported warriors, day in and day out. We pray for every arm, every extended hand of our communities. So we encourage you to please come, support us on Thursday. Thank God for our leadership through Pastor Flippo and these fellow brothering here today and sisters today. We got your back. All right?
Thank you so very much, and I will see you on Thursday. I'll be a lot of places on Thursday.
All right. Since they taking all these pictures, will somebody please?
Sure. 12 o'clock, 12 noon, underneath the cover. Pastor Ben War, that is 12 o'clock.
Thursday.
Thursday, 12 to 1. Thank you. For those of you who are here for the proclamations, that does conclude the reading of all three of the proclamations. If you so choose, you may leave at this time. It's a time for public comment. If you would like to speak, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your indication that your time is up. Thank you.
Charlie Crapp, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Charlie Crap, nine twenty-eight East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, Mr. Williams and staff. I wanted to speak on the printed, let's see, printed consent agenda. There's a couple of items that I find a little, I would like, this may be nitpicking, but on line five down from the top of the page, we say, call to order.
Which item?
Line five after call to order. Let's see, you see there where it says, item one, two, I would like to see the regular, the words regular agenda added to that so it'll be more clear that those are just regular agenda items. And the other alphabet is the consent agenda. Then item E, could we have a little more descriptive, description added to the bordering streets of the subdivision? I noticed it just lists the subdivision. And then item G, add a price that the scoreboards are going to cost. And then down at the bottom, under the public, the other agenda, what is it? Anyway, items one and two, give a brief description of the lawsuit, if that's possible. Council and staff, thank each of you for your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? I'm gonna pull, okay, I'll go ahead and finish this one. So no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we have two presentations, we have a legislative update. Mr. City Manager, if you would, please take us into that presentation.
Yes, Mayor, council. Today we have Mr. Eddie Salis here again. He's our person that works at Hillco Partners. He's here to give us an update on the legislative session, eighty-eighth session that's going, that's happening in Austin as we speak. We had had a request to get frequent updates, so this is one of those updates we're giving you today, so, Mr. Salis.
Thank you, Mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be here. I wanted to say thank you to you all and of course the staff on responsiveness and getting to Austin for visits and for testimony on the hotel project bill. I'm going to just kind of go back to what we talked about when I was here first. And first of all, please let me say it is a privilege to represent the city and the council and the constituents of this community. This is, this is a very nice break from, from the legislative craziness that's kind of going on right now, but it's a privilege and a pleasure to be here and I look forward to the next time. When we, when we met, it was early and I think we talked quite a bit about the, the funding or the surplus that the legislature was going to, to be dealing with. I think I mentioned that the legislature was likely to identify ways to make sure that certain projects that had been needing some, some revenue and some appropriations were looked at differently, given the large surplus that the state was experiencing. And they are. And I'm gonna go through a couple of these areas as, as they pertain to some of the areas of, of the legislative agenda. And if it's okay, I'll close with a discussion on the qualified hotel project and of course try to answer any of the questions you have and beg your indulgence if I can get anything that I can't answer back to you as soon as possible. So, one of the areas that, that we discuss in the, in the agenda is economic development. And I think there, there's one main project that is going on with regard to legislation, and it's not so much pertaining to, to cities, but the school districts. And there is a value limitation for school districts that used to be called three thirteen. It is now, we refer to it as four oh three. It is an economic development bill. It was received a very low bill number by the Speaker, HB five, and we are moving forward with that to try to bring that economic development tool to communities. Now that, as I mentioned, that's predominantly for the city, or rather the school districts to, to enter into agreements, but they are very valuable to, to, to an area and, and an economy, which I know you all have already been very, very diligent in doing. Another area that we discussed or is discussed is tourism and the, the value of the hot tax and what's coming back into communities. There is a fair appropriation that is coming from that hot tax to tourism for communities. So it's a, it's over fifty million, of course, it's for the, for the state and for the, for the appropriate use of that, but it is to promote tourism in communities. Councilmember Samuel, we talked quite a bit about mental health, and I'm really, really proud to talk about what Representative Thompson has proposed in, in the, in the House. Her bill, HB, I'm sorry, HB fifteen, would establish the Texas Mental Health and Brain Institute, which is something obviously that is, you know, landmark effort. The bill needs to pass, but also, this is one of those measures where they are appropriating money and will ask the voters if they approve through what we call a House Joint Resolution, which means it's a, it's a, it's an amendment to the Constitution. So if that bill passes, then that joint resolution will come to the constituents of Texas to approve or not. And that, we're talking about three billion dollars that would go to, to that. And I think our discussion came in, as we discussed homelessness, mental health, and various aspects of that. There's another bill, SB twenty-six, that, that also appropriates thirteen million to the same, in the same direction, as well as, as what some of the relevant agencies have been appropriated in the past for, for those types of efforts or homeless funding. It's, it's been a, it's been an opportune time to, to fill those buckets back up because of the, of the surplus. From the, from the areas of transportation, resiliency, there is a good level of appropriation to flood mitigation. The EDAP program is also being sustained and, and being appropriated money for debt service, which is valuable. And so those projects will, will continue. With regard to transportation and infrastructure, there have been, there has been an appropriation to two areas that, that have not been very leveraged. And this is six, six hundred million dollars for port improvement and for, two hundred of that for port improvement and four hundred of that for channel improvement. And this is something, in, in talking with the Speaker's office as I was preparing here, it, it is, it is not, it's new money, but it's also money that, that are in pots that have just not been as leveraged as, as they could. So I look forward to playing any role, if that appropriation goes through, I look forward to playing any role I can to make sure we're, we're accessing that, that, that value as well as possible. With regard to property tax, probably the largest discussion of, of the surplus has been bringing property tax relief to Texas. Everybody's for it, but it's, the, the two chambers, the Senate and the House, have different plans. The House has a property tax cap, we talked about that when we were here first, and the Senate has a combination of three bills that compress school district taxes, create a broader homestead exemption, and also help small businesses with personal property tax exemption value going, going to twenty-five thousand. That's gonna be a, you know, that, that's got a lot of discussion to it, you know, the, that itself will have a joint resolution, so it would go to the voters. What that means is not only do we, does, does that put the voters in line to vote for it, but it also takes a pretty high threshold of a vote. And so although each chamber has passed their respective plans out, they still have to approve their, the, the opposite chamber's plan. There's, there's already talk that this might, if this doesn't speed up in the discussion, this might cause, cause a special session. And so we're all ready for that usually, as you know, the, the governor is the only one who can call a special session, and typically he or she will add items to the call, as we say. And so even if, if it were to be for property tax, the, the governor still has the prerogative to add other items to that, to that agenda, to that list. The, so that, that's, that's where we are. The, the House bill is about twelve billion dollar in relief, the Senate bill about fifteen. It's real money, good part is, we've, it's there today. And again, that is the, the benefit of having the surplus that the, that the legislature was experiencing. I want to discuss a bill that, that, that seems to not, not be deterred, House Bill twenty-one twenty-seven. And this is a, a bill that I know many have heard about in, in city government. It is the, what is referred to as the field preemption bill. And it's a pretty broad bill. The difficult part of this bill is it's hard to identify how much it will impact. And what apparently field preemption means is taking a item in statute and preempting everything that is in that quote unquote "field." The discussion has been lively, the, the, the author of the bill has established that there are more safeguards than not, payday lending, various types of ordinances that will not be preempted. There's still some time to go. This particular, this House bill is in the, in, in the Senate now, from the House to the Senate, but the, the importance of this bill is moving forward, should it pass, and we've been trying to, to bring attention to the areas that, that, that could be looked at differently and letting local government do their, their job. Should this bill pass, I think the important process will be to identify where the limitations were created. And it's, it's really, it's, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I've heard lawyers talk about how this is, is hard to identify the scope of, of this because it's, something like this has never, never occurred. So we're keeping an eye on that, staying in touch certainly on, on that particular legislation.
On that note, what is the chances of that bill passing? Because as I understand, what the essence of that bill does is it takes home rural cities and strips some of their power, their decision-making processes, puts them in a central body in Austin. And, you know, as a home rural city, we're a big state, very diverse, what works in Beaumont might not work in El Paso and so forth. And I can see, I've read, I've delved into that a little bit, and it looks like a lot of that is going to require court interpretation, which, if you lose, could result in a lot of attorney's fees being paid. So it, it creates quite a sticky situation. What are the, what is the likelihood of that passing?
I, I would, I would have to say the odds are good.
Oh boy.
No, that ain't good.
Pardon?
I would say that's not good.
And, and you know, that, that's not due to the lack of process or input or effort. Cities have, have had a, a run over the last several sessions that have been difficult, that I think responses or reactions to how certain cities behave or how they govern, which is not fair to Beaumont, because they don't do the things that some of the, some of the cities out there that do, that, that, that just catch the attention of legislators. So the process to identify the differences of that, council member, continue. It's not over till it's over, and that's May twenty-ninth. To your point about litigation, that's, that's exactly what's gonna happen. And, and I, the, the, the most general way I could understand a description was it takes a home rural city and turns it into a general law city.
Yeah, and you know, I've seen some cities have adopted resolutions encouraging their legislators to not support this bill. I don't know if that's something that we should do here in Beaumont, but I did get a copy of what they did in La Gavista, which is outside of Austin and has a very well-written resolution, and I can make that available to the city manager and council if you desire, but we, we better pay attention to this.
Well, and, and your, that effort could never hurt. The vote was as such in, in the House, that it, it was very, it was overwhelmingly supported. And again, I, I, I think there is several factors to that, whose bill it was, you know, who it really meant to, to get at, that type of, of stuff. So we will, we will continue to communicate, and if there's something, it's over in the Senate. I know that some of the crew that was at the Capitol, that had meetings during Golden Triangle days, did visit with, with members, certainly Senator Creighton and Senator Nichols' staff. It's been a, it's been a challenging discussion because the points that have been brought up to the author, the author has found a way to respond to say, you're, you're, you're gonna be okay with that. So we keep, you know, we keep trying to, to, to put some practical discussion to that, and it's, it's in the Senate now, so that's our, that's our, our field of play next, so. But please rest assured, we've been working on this issue diligently. You're in good company as a council as to who has concerns about this. So you're, you're certainly not alone, and we, we understand what that, what that means to, to local, local governance. So on that, on that note, I, I'll, I'll finish up on the qualified hotel project. As you remember, Mayor, you were there, I think, what was it, April third? In the legislature, you know, some things move slow and then they take off. And so fortunately, in, in, in preparation to coming here, the, the bill quote unquote moved, was passed out of committee. The similar bills like this bill, House Bill thirty-two fifty, had not been out of committee. So it wasn't just the Beaumont bill, it was the bills similar to them that had been heard that same day, Mayor, that you were, you know, kind enough to, to go and, and Mr. Williams to, to be down there for the hearing. And so at this point, what we are prepared for, and I, I've got to say, you know, kudos to, to Representative Manuel, he's, he's hardworking, he's not your typical freshman, although he is a freshman, but the, the, the work that he did in the legislature certainly shows through in, in his understanding of the process. But now what is either gonna happen, or one of two tracks, the bill will also either go independently through the, through the, through the House and to the Senate, or what has happened in, in efforts past is put, be put into a omnibus bill, I think I might have mentioned that when I was here before, and that is a, that's a more efficient way, not a requirement, but my understanding and our effort is towards being ready for whichever way that has to happen. And if something happens to those two measures, well, we've got Senate bills that are coming over to the House that, that we will find vehicles to, to, to make eligible for, for this work. So I want to thank the staff for sure in being responsive and being, you know, attentive and, and ready to, to talk about this. When we visited with Senator Nichols' office, he was certainly amenable to support and what he had asked us for, and this is another thank you, was a resolution from the city supporting, as well as a resolution from the county, which we both which we both, we have both in hand and he has in hand. So we're in a good place there relative to that. So I know that that support will continue. But the bill itself, again, is doing well. I know this was kind of saving the best for last. This was the priority and on the legislative agenda and for the community. And we know that. And we're acting accordingly to make sure we have a high level of success.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted staff to be aware that I would also be in support of the resolution with the home rural situation. I think it's very important that we kind of keep our ability to, you know, dictate what comes in and out and how. So I would be in support of that as well. I think it's important that Councilmember Getz brought it up, that we do address that. And that could affect our city in the long haul on how we negotiate and what we actually get out here. So I definitely would like to be in support of that. Also, while we're on this topic, you know, I want to also shout out Christian Manuel because it's a rider currently in the budget that he's proposing to get anywhere from six to ten million to do a recreational center out there at Alice Keefe Park. I think it's important that the community knows that that's in the process. I know Mayor, Chris, Duryo, y'all have been pretty supportive on that, talking with Christian, but that's actually doing pretty good. And I'm glad you came down. I know it's not a bill, but I also think it's pretty important that people know the state of Texas has got a surplus of funding. And that's something we've been working on as a council and a community to bring something positive to the south end of town. And it's a huge possibility that it may go through, and it's roughly six to ten million dollars. So that's in the process. Let's keep our fingers crossed. But I think we should also celebrate the wins and compliment our state rep on the job, well-done that he's doing out there. And thank you for coming down and doing the presentation.
Here, here, he's doing a great job, for sure.
He is. I know, everything went so fast. You made a phone call on Friday, and the city manager said, I need you in Austin. And I got to Austin at nine PM that night, and eight o'clock the next morning, you were in front of a senate hearing. So, and things happen that fast, and sometimes you just have to move with the flow of the way things are happening and just change your plans and jump in to the benefit of your city and your citizens. And Mr. Williams and I, we were able to make that happen real fast. And we thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you for being ready and responsive. And to my colleagues, your staff has just been always ready. You know, things move fast, and then they slow down, and then they move fast. It's been a privilege and a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you for me.
Sure, Mr. Williams.
To reply to Councilmember Getz and Councilmember Turner's resolution, I think we are in line and order with the legislative agenda we've adopted to do that. It probably falls under item eleven or something. So if you give me the proposal, the one that the other city has, and we'll get something to council for next meeting, for sure. I do have a question about one bill, though. And the number escapes me. It is the disannexation bill, the big one that if cities don't provide utilities within an area, people can petition to be disannexed from a city. It was gaining a lot of traction. I mean, even if you don't give them water or provide electricity or whatever that utilities that you provide to the rest of your citizens, they can be disannexed. Is that getting any traction?
Well, it is, but there's still some game to play. And yes or no, I'm sorry, I should have had that ready.
No, that's okay. I should have.
No, no, no. The annexation and the ETJ bills that are out there, I think they're reactive to things that are going on in certain areas and don't always fit every community. So we're making those points to that legislation and others, Mr. Williams. So I'll certainly get that back to you on it.
Twelve seventy-nine.
Twelve seventy-nine. House Bill twelve seventy-nine. Thanks. And thanks, Eddie. Thanks for what you're doing. You've been most responsive to us. That's not always the case, not saying anything, but you've been very responsive. Even when the mayor and I made the trek over there along with the chamber, you were there with us, lockstep, gotten us through that process. You and you are the principals of the company. So thanks for your response.
Yes, sir, of course. It's a privilege. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank you, and hopefully you can get out and beat the Houston traffic.
Thank you. Thank you for that, for those prayers, Mayor. That was wonderful.
Thank you. Okay, we have another presentation. And Mr. Williams, if you'll take us into the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a presentation on intersection aesthetics from Tech Dot. We have with us today Tech Dot District Engineer, Mr. Martin Gonzalez, here to talk with us. Bart, I don't know if you need to say anything before Mr. Gonzalez gets up, but we have the district engineer.
He's gonna let you have it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and rest of the staff. Like you mentioned, my name is Martin Gonzalez. I have the privilege of serving the citizens of the state of Texas and as the Beaumont District Engineer for the eight counties that comprise the Beaumont District. So today, I'm here joined with Sarah DePrae, our Public Information Officer. I know, I'm sure that a lot of you are more accustomed to talking to Sarah than you are to me, so, and that's okay. I kind of like that. But, I'm just kidding. So we're here today because, as you know, we have the Cardinal Interchange Project, and we also have coming up the Eastex Interchange Project, which is US sixty-nine and I-ten improvements. We're widening from the existing configuration to six lanes, and we're doing the frontage road improvements, things like that. So since I became the district engineer in October of 2021, we are trying to make sure that we involve our communities in a lot of the different aspects of what we do with our construction projects. Part of that is, you know, when we talk about, can you go to the other one first? If you don't mind? The first? Yeah, thank you, perfect. Yes. So I didn't want y'all to see that yet. I was gonna try to talk it up first, but that's okay. Well, but, no, it's fine. So communication, getting input, that's important, right? And we want to make sure that we give options. I know that I've visited with a lot of you in the past, and we talk about community involvement and letting the public have some sort of voice into kind of what goes into some of our projects, right? So keeping that in mind is why we are presenting this today. What we are doing is, at the intersections where we have retaining walls with this Eastex project, we're looking to give three options. That's the reason why I'm presenting this today to you all. The first option, that you see up there on the screen, option one, it shows what we would show as the Beaumont logo with the star, right, on one side of the intersection. On the other side, we would have, it says Beaumont, and it has some trees in the back, kind of to, you know, paying homage to the area of the Big Thicket and all kinds of things like that, right? That way, when people come and they stop at these different intersections, they'd be able to see, you know, that aesthetic, you know, element to it. And as you can see right there, I put an example of kind of what you see in Bastrop, there near Austin. That would be actually built into the retaining walls. So it's kind of, you know, recessed as part of the retaining wall itself. So that would be manufactured that way. The second option is showing you right there some stars. It's within a large circle, and the stars would have a light fixture behind it. It would be illuminated. So at nighttime, those stars would have like some, like a blue light or white light behind them. You know, again, I think there's some other communities that do, that have done things similar to that. And the last option that we are showing is, as you can see, is just blank canvas, right? The reason why we show a blank canvas like that is because we thought it would be a good idea to offer the opportunity, if you have a local artist or something like that, that y'all would like to do a mural that is representative kind of of the Beaumont area. We would, you know, obviously, the content would need to be approved and reviewed by Tech Dot first, but that would be a third option. So that's what I wanted to come and visit with you all today and show you all, so that give you a couple of options. Either, obviously, you all take a look and talk amongst yourselves and decide what option you care for best. But also, in trying to involve the community, maybe you could put this and make this available to the public and say, hey, these are the three options we have. Give us your input. Which one do y'all like best? And with that, we would move from that point and incorporate that into our design. What I would say is, from the time standpoint, we have probably about a month or so to try to get some sort of feedback. You know, a month, month and a half would be great. But I wanted to bring that to you all. That's what we're planning on doing at the retaining walls. So the other portion is the, where we have right now, where we have the Maury Myers Bridge, right? What I-ten is gonna be doing, at this point, we're gonna be going over Laurel Avenue. And currently, you see on the ends, we have that, those two kind of monuments that say Maury Myers, right? So what we're looking to do here is incorporate some of those same elements that we have presently. And you can see up there, I put a little kind of snapshot of what it looks like today. And our goal is to do similar architectural elements to keep that, you know, along the same lines, not change that location too much from what it currently sits, and then put something there, you know, in honor of Maury Myers. Not saying necessarily that we're like finally sold on that, but we could even do like plaques on either side of the bridge. But we're trying to make sure that we incorporate some of those existing elements that everybody's been accustomed to and familiar to, familiar with at this location. So I wanted to share that with you and what we're planning on doing. Because I didn't want to just, we didn't want to just lose the, you know, the existing features that we have in that location. So wanted to get y'all's thoughts on that as well. So that's really all I wanted to show you all today. And so I'll stop talking now and open it up to any questions or comments that you may have of me.
I have a question. So the Maury Myers Bridge is not coming down?
It is. So that is coming down. So I-ten is going over. So we're gonna be at grade.
I was just trying to figure this picture out.
Yes, similar to what we did at Major Drive. So that's what Laurel is gonna look like, Laurel.
And I-ten's gonna go over.
Yeah, thank you. I should have made that clear. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Mr. Morton, first of all, thank you for coming here and making this presentation. Man, you spoke along with other councilmembers, city manager, and staff about, you know, getting community input. And I want to appreciate you and let you know publicly, I appreciate you for coming here, allowing us to do so as a council. And if I can see how everybody feels about this, I think it's important that we do do somewhat of a survey to let the community have some form of an input on how they will feel, that they would like the aesthetics of our, you know, new intersections to look. I like the fact that it's three options to keep it nice and simple, but I think it's extremely important to get the community's feedback. And I think that'll help with the pride and everything to that magnitude. I know what I personally like, but it's not up to me. I think it needs to be up to the community. So I appreciate you, and I do support that option. So if anybody else can chime in on how they feel, I greatly appreciate it.
Which option?
Let the community actually do a survey so they can, you know, give us some feedback on what they think. I think that'd be a good task for Laurel.
Mayor, I-ten.
The retaining walls, where we have these options, how many of them are there and where are they located?
So we have two locations that I know of. But we have two locations where we're gonna have these elements, and they would be on either side, you know, both traveling eastbound and westbound. So anywhere that we'd have those retaining walls throughout that project, because a lot of this project is actually gonna be elevated. So it's gonna be open at a lot of locations. But I can get back with you on what intersection is exactly that would affect. But we're looking to have kind of the same consistency on all of them so that we can have similar elements throughout the project.
Okay.
Councilmember Getz?
I know what I'm about to say is important to Councilmember Turner, and he's probably spoken to you about the desire to illuminate some of our underpasses, especially some of those around Lamar with Lamar colors. Is that something that Tech Dot is able to do? Is that something that we can talk to you about doing?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've met regarding the desire to illuminate or add illumination to some of these things. And so based on the last conversation that we had, there's some different routes that we can go on, right? Because with all the construction that we have right now on sixty-nine and, you know, with Eastex coming and all that, we'd hate to put some nice illumination there and then we're like tearing it up next week, right? Because, you know, that just wouldn't look good for everyone. There's a couple of different options, right? Incorporating it into our design elements. There's some different projects, depending on how the city wants to prioritize implementing these changes. You can do an agreement to where you all fund that, and we'd be happy to allow those kinds of modifications. Or we can incorporate it into our, some of our construction projects with obviously municipal maintenance agreement being in place as to who is responsible for what. So there's different options.
Any other comments? Thank you so very much for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Appreciate that. Thank y'all for having us.
Exciting.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, again, we wanted to just reach out and kind of, because like we're talking about wanting to encourage some more community involvement, I think that's important. So give us some options. And then, so y'all let us know, you know, let Councilman Turner can tell y'all kind of offline what it is. I'm just kidding. But I like.
Five weeks.
Say again?
Five weeks.
Yes, ma'am. So five, six weeks. I mean, I'll work with y'all a little bit on that, but.
One other question, Mayor. The Cardinal Interchange Project and the Eastex completion dates?
Okay, so Eastex, we haven't gone, we'll go to letting next year. But Cardinal, we're still probably about two to three years away from getting that completed. They're heavily involved projects, you know, widening to six lanes, doing some frontage road, elevated sections, connectors. So, and we've had some challenges with utilities kind of being an issue. I know everybody deals with a lot of utility, you know, challenges. So that kind of sets us back from time to time. But that's kind of what we're expecting. Once we break ground on some of these, it, depending on the project and the complexity, we go anywhere from four to five years to complete.
Okay. Progress takes time.
It does.
Turner, can you go back to the first slide with the three options for a sec?
And we're still looking at possibly end of 2028, maybe 2029 for final completion. Has anything been pushed further out or?
For?
For the full freeway projects. I think we were saying the end of 2028, roughly 2029.
So if we let, yeah, we let.
It's May, right?
May of next year. So yes, it would be about four to five years to get Eastex completed.
Okay.
You're talking about from the beginning all the way to the end of? Because you're gonna do it in sections, right?
Yes, we're doing it in sections. So Cardinal already started.
Right.
And, you know, we're a year into that one. And then Eastex will start probably about ninety days after it lets. So if we let in May or June of, no wait, is it May or in June, or is it September, right?
No.
Okay, I think it is May. May, so June, July, August-ish timeframe is when we start breaking ground. So from that point, four to five years. Weather permitting, everything, you know, we get a whole lot of rain down here. This is a whole lot different from where I came from initially. I've been in Beaumont now for three years, so really happy to be here. But I never got any rain like what we get here. So sixty-plus inches of rain every year.
You're talking about May of twenty-four, right?
Yes.
The Eastex project?
It goes to letting, yes. So that's when they open bids. And then typically, sixty to ninety days after that is when it actually gets physically awarded, well, and the contractor starts. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. This is city manager. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Mayor, uh, I'm gonna yield to learned city attorney on this item. This is hers.
Okay. Well. Mayor and council, this is the um consider resolution authorizing the acceptance of the proposed settlement for Energy's two thousand and two base rate case. Um, as you can recall, back in um July, we talked about um the fact that they had proposed a settlement. And so this is the final agreement to that settlement. Um, if you remember way, way back initially, Energy was proposing approximately um, a fifty-four million dollar increase that would have increased um the average customer's bill um to over sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, we've negotiated that down now to about fourteen dollars a month, um, which is an overall um what we consider a good a good compromise because it kind of, as we mentioned in our memo, reduces the shock to those customers who use significantly less energy. Um, there's some other um key points for that in the bill in that it um has some other uh energy saving costs to the consumer. We do recommend approval of the bill. The cost was or the the steering committee is supportive of this and feel like it's in the best interest of all the cities. So I will take any questions if you have them.
Councilmember Getz? No? Any questions, any comments? No questions, no comments. City Attorney, we're going to take a vote.
As soon as there's a motion.
I move to approve.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. I have the reading of item number two, please.
Public. Public.
Public hearing.
Yes, public hearing. Receive comments on public services and public facilities and improvements line items of the consolidated grant programs twenty twenty-three annual action plan.
The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone?
No, ma'am. I don't have any at this time.
Okay. There's no one at this time to speak. I will now close the public hearing. Thank you. Now's the time for any citizen who wish to speak.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Item two.
Item two. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Reading of item number two, please.
Consider adopting the consolidated grant programs twenty twenty-three annual action plan. And uh council conduct the public hearing to receive comments on the public services and public facilities and improvements line items of the consolidated grant programs twenty twenty-three annual action plan and consider approving a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three annual action plan.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion, Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Getz?
Yes, Mr. Manager and Staff, I have a few questions about some of the CDBG funding. Uh, can community block grant funding be used to remove dead trees in low to moderate income areas? I think that's something with those vacant lots. A lot of times we may mow them, but those dead trees, they can possibly fall on people's home and become a nuisance and, you know, getting the piping under the ground. So I want to know if that's a possibility. Uh, another one is can landlords use CDBG funding in low to moderate income areas to fix homes? Uh, we had citizens come to the podium and ask this. I think if we're looking at the action plan, we may need to actually discuss and see if this can be an option. And the third one is can CDBG funding be used for a commercial facade match program? What I've seen in other cities is in low to moderate income areas, you may have a business that looks pretty bad and maybe a paint job and the city match it with CDB jump BG CDBG funding would be, you know, a morale boost to that area. So I think this is an opportunity for us to get pretty strategic on, you know, how we utilize that funding and you know, I see some of the funding, we have leftover expenses. And I think with even Chodo funding, the way some areas in our city look, I don't think we should have any funding left over. I think we need to utilize and then spend it. So we need to get pretty aggressive on, you know, making sure some of this funding is utilized in these low to moderate income areas the way they should be.
Yes, sir. Um, so councilman, just um kind of going down those questions. Regards to code enforcement, CDBG funds can be used for the administration of the code enforcement. So um essentially expenses associated with code enforcement officers, the administration of the program, um, direct funding, direct use of CDBG funding. Um, I would have to check to confirm, but uh my initial thought is it's not an eligible expense to actually do tree removal. But we can, we can certainly um confirm that for you. Second, on the the second point about landlords uh being eligible for CDBG uh funds to perhaps um rehab rental units. We do currently have a rental rehab program, but it's for homeowners only. Um, I believe in the past, this is many, many years ago, we may have had a rental rehab program for um just that rental property. And we can certainly uh research that as an option. As you alluded to, we do have um some unexpended funds in prior program years. Pretty considerable amount. So my recommendation maybe for both of those programs as well as the facade program you mentioned, uh, we take a look at those and come back with um with proposal um for those unspent funds.
Thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
Chris, there's a hundred thousand dollars allocated for uh special projects to be determined. Uh, do we have any idea yet as to what those special projects are?
No, sir. And to that point, we could, whenever we do a program, whether it's, you know, we do a facade program or we do a, you know, a rental rehab program, you know, we're going to have to, of course, research it, develop guidelines, get those through a public hearing process to take public input. So it takes time to develop. So to that point, on the one hundred thousand for special projects, that that money could be used for uh something like a facade program or rental rehab along with those prior unfunded. Uh, the other thing is, you know, a couple of years ago, we had a sewer line repair program. We didn't get a lot of uh partic- much of any participation because a lot of the um calls that we ended up getting were um from renters. And so again, we want to keep a little bit of funding because we do get calls from time to time. We actually just got one uh inquiry yesterday. So we want to keep a little bit of funding available for things like that. But I think going back to both your points, we'll have money in this program years as well as a couple of prior program years where we may be able to uh develop some of those programs.
The sewer line rehab program, um, you know, a lot of times people complain about sewage backing up into their house and they, of course, the first instinct is to assume that there's a city problem. And then we often go out and look, televise the lines. And I can tell you just as recently as today, uh, I got an email back in which a constituent uh was having that same problem. And upon televising the lines, it was determined that she lived out in Amelia. She has an old concrete line that roots from trees have completely encroached into, and this is her service line, so that's her responsibility, not the city responsibility. She would have been, I presume, potentially eligible for that program uh that you just referred to. Is that program still there?
We do. Again, it's been a couple of years, but we do, we do have funding available. So um if if under that program, if you are a homeowner, you meet, you know, the next question would be income eligibility because there are income cap uh caps, um, you know, that is a possibility, so.
Okay. Thank.
Mr. Boone, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, back with the trees because I've had some calls also where there are abandoned lots and there are there are city lots that we take care of. But there are trees that are down and it's not the responsibility of the neighbors to take care of it. However, the lots have have sat there for years. And so from one storm to the next, the trees are just there. And so no one's taking care of it and it's it's just a nuisance and a eyesore for the neighbor that lives next door to it. So is there any way we could?
We we, yeah, historically, we have not taken care of trees. We, a lot of the properties that the city mows, we don't necessarily own. Um, people think that we do, we the city do, but they're really just, they're kind of in the county's name because they're back taxes owed, but we don't really own them. But to your point, we do maintain them, the purpose being for a health and safety issue, of course. We've got mosquitoes and 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 things like that. And so um to your point, we can, we can certainly research. If if CDBG is not an eligible funding source to remove the trees, um, you know, potentially general funds might be, but we would, uh, again, probably the best thing to do is allow staff to do some work in terms of, you know, what is the scope of what we're talking about? And then what might be the cost be? So.
I have a question for legal. At one point, that was an issue, uh, whether the city would be able to go onto that property uh if it's not city property and remove trees. Is that an issue?
So it's 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 a complicated question. So I'm gonna try to give you the a very not so legal answer. Um, the city cannot enter another person's property and remove property. And whether or not a a tree has value has yet to be assessed. However, if the tree or if the harborage of the the items on the property are creating a nuisance or a public health and safety issue, then we can. Um, obviously with proper notice to the owner, um, we can do so if there, if the city is going to do that at no cost assessment to the owner, then the due process process is a little shortened. If we plan to assess uh any cleanup costs to the owner, then obviously there's a different process that we would need to go to that would be a little bit longer. But whether or not a tree or lumber has value is is a tricky question.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add something?
Sure.
Uh, one way I've addressed this in the past is through dead tree ordinances, an ordinance. I don't know if we have that ordinance here. I I don't know all of our ordinances still. But if there's a dead tree ordinance, if it's not removed, the city can have authority to go onto that property to to take that tree down or remove a dead tree that's there. So that could be something we could look at to to tack it up through a dead tree ordinance and then allocating some funds to John Fund or whatever to do that because it's it's truly an issue here.
So we don't, we do not have a dead tree ordinance. And I believe, Chris can correct me, I think it's just considered litter and harborage it. It's not separately separated out in the ordinance. It's just a general um litter and clutter. So we we've kind of lumped it in, but we don't have a dead tree ordinance. So we can definitely look into that.
That would be great. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion, really.
I think we all gonna second that.
It's already in the notes. Simmered.
Well, that's what good discussions are about. Okay. So any other comment? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Now's the time for any citizen who wish to speak and public comment. If you haven't already done so, fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. When it's time for you to speak, the green light will come on. And at the end of your three minutes, the red light will be your indication that your time is up. Thank you.
Dylan, Dylan Richardson, forty-five seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, all. As many of you know, my name is Dylan Richardson. I am speaking you all to you all today in regards to the election. As my constituents and I do not know who will win these seats, you all sit in today. I would like to acknowledge the real possibility of all incumbents being reelected for another term. I believe that continuity could be a blessing to this city and its citizens. I ask that if this proves to be the case, that you all work together for the betterment of Beaumont. I understand that my nature at these meetings has been viewed as hostile in nature by some. I would like to rephrase that with the words passionate and dissatisfied. I understand that, excuse me, I would like to ref- I am one of the few and finite members of the youth in this city that has an authentic desire to stay in the city long term. I'm not asking that you listen to me because of that. I'm asking that you listen to me because I feel I am in touch with the pulse of this city. It is no secret that this city is divided by overpasses and railroad tracks. The development and infrastructure of the third and fourth wards are nowhere near the quality and standards held in the second. I refuse to adhere to the belief by prejudiced individuals that it is due to the inaction of the representation of those wards because I do know better. And I am of the opinion that those wards do have adequate and effective representation. I believe what should be called into question, however, is that due to the demographics of those respective wards, there is an effort, no effort, to enhance the quality of life for them. And that I ask you all to make a point of emphasis in your next terms. That is for you all to rule, lead and develop without bias and predilections. Just the other day, my best friend and I attended the Lamar University football spring game. During the game, we were approached by the president of Lamar, Dr. Jaime Taylor. This was by far our first encounter, but we still spoke for some time. And if there is one thing that I can say about Dr. Taylor, it is that he is a dreamer. He is what the university and the city needs. I implore you all to reach out to him and evoke the power of his office as well as the offices of your other better connected citizens to help work as a cohort of sorts to regress the city of Beaumont to where it needs to be. The school I will soon call my alma mater, Lamar University, has fourteen hundred international students struggling to find affordable off-campus housing. How can we as a city speak in hopes of coming to the top times if we don't support the youth who have chosen to come here and who inadvertently create a melting pot of culture in this city, which I would argue is a necessity, requirement and standard held by any growing city? Lamar University needs help. Multiple departments are undergoing overhauls and administrative roles are being filled by outsiders who have no touch with the roots of this city or any genuine or any genuine interest in helping or recruiting the kids that attend schools within BISD. Y'all have spoken on the issues of first responders not residing within city limits. And while I agree that is an issue, what about the university's school administrator positions not being filled by or even supported by alumni? The infrastructure that surrounds the city or the university would have been considered egregious by experts for an extended period of time, which in large part, Councilman-at-Large A.J. Turner took upon himself to solve. And to him, I say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Charlie Crapp, nine twenty-eight East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and City Council and and staff. And uh today I I would like to uh address Councilman Getz. I I want to give my deepest sympathy to you and your wife, Allison, to the children and her parents, Jerry and Iris Nathan, for having to deal with her medical condition. I appreciate you speaking a couple of weeks ago on her volunteer service to the citizens of Beaumont. Her many chairmanships and presidential positions speak for themselves. She has given so much to those organizations in the city of Beaumont. Allison Nathan Getz.